Father pray, our Father in heaven. Thank you for a beautiful day in Fannin County. I ask you be with this meeting, have us all to do, be and say, Father, what you would have us do, be with each one of our commissioners and give them the insight and the courage to protect the citizens of this county, and I thank you for each one of them. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda to approve the minutes of the September twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, ready for me? Do I hear a motion to approve these minutes is written?
I make the motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a variance request from Jennifer Lynn Bloom, table from last meeting, it's over on Overlook Trail, Birds Eye View. You guys went and looked at it, so I assume we don't have little problems. Do I hear a motion to approve this variance?
I made a motion, I didn't look at it. No problem with it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, approved all invoices over forty-five hundred dollars.
I'm not giving any invoices this week, I think we have several committed.
So we don't have one?
No.
Okay. Item number five, variance request from Gordon Patricia Bailey, that's on North Pole Road. I make a motion, we approve this variance for it's up on bank, it's ten foot higher than the note bid, so somebody could've get up there if they wanted to. So I make a motion, we approve this variance. Do I hear a second?
I want to outlook catch in this oil, I said, I'm looking this right here.
Okay. Do I hear a... Have a motion or a second? On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six, variance request from Thomas M. Foster, building storage sheds, and he wants to build a five-foot of property line, and he has certified and stamped letter from his neighbor saying he's good with him building it five-foot from his property line.
You know, five-foot is a name, I'm looking for a fifth.
I'll make a motion or a second.
Say.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number seven is a bid, some pressure wash at courthouse.
One of them was from Cut Number Pro, and it was seven thousand five seventy-five. The other one was from Squeaky Clean Windows for six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Have we used any of items?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. I thought, yeah, I thought it must've been over this was pretty high. They insured, and so he assured me that, well, both of them assured me that they could do the job, so I guess it's... The man should be seen.
What about the other bike? It's all the base.
Squeaky Clean. Squeaky Clean. I'm sorry.
So Squeaky Clean has the low bid at six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
So if Squeaky Clean, you make sure, because Cut Number Pro, they put them in restricted pressure wash courthouse and the jail, make sure that they're...
They didn't put it on, I did. It is a courthouse and a jail, the both of them need it real bad, so... Do I hear a motion? Who's courthouse?
They are aware, they did both, courthouse and jail, John said.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. And they have insurance.
They are insured, okay. And the problem was, make a motion.
Make a motion, second?
Yeah, second.
On my favor, say aye. Item number eight, approve the purchase of new phone system, BTC costing being thirty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Any discussion on that?
What are we getting?
What are we getting?
For a month, for a month.
Probably in your last, for the last page, there is...
Can we get all their phones?
We're getting, yeah, all their phones. It is, we'll get hosted, a hundred and thirteen hosted user pro, the Olachi lines, hosted ethernet circuit, auto attendant, hosted twenty hosted analog lines, backs, cordless phones, whatever we need there also, and I don't know if it just didn't pull, no, there it is, there are two, I don't know, I don't know if I can back this, but it's two Alcatel Lucent P O E switch, forty-eight port five, have the same thing with twenty-four port, which totals thirteen thousand and seventy dollars. And then, of course, all of the telephones, the actual phones, but those are the next telephones that they have, there's no longer, yeah, we've got eighty-four phones, I don't know why it didn't pull, eighty-four Cisco S P A telephones, and then twenty-nine Cisco S P A five oh nine G telephones, that is, that's replacing everything in this entire courthouse, jail, sheriff's office jail, every, they have a box fair on that, so we get at least half of the back of it, a little bit more.
What do they box fair?
Yeah, it's like, well, I'd have to read the whole, go read the whole cover, but yeah, there's a little bit of a fair that either way can face.
Yeah, it's a good service for all the people.
That can afford it, basically.
I make a motion, go with it. Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number eleven, Larry Thomas and Rob Rawls to the rest of purchase of the rescue truck with volunteer funds. Mr. Thomas.
You'll need to pick one.
There you are.
Five minutes.
Last year, actually, we were looking at purchasing the truck, and if y'all are aware, we got a grant that's going to cover the rescue truck.
Mike, I don't know if you want to hear this too, Larry.
Please, we can do that from, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Anyway, oh, that song a while ago, "Squish Flash," I was taking it back, that's what you was saying, but anyway, nevertheless, volunteers have come together last year and were talking about it in reference to buying the truck. I know we've been buying some much needed equipment with donations that the fire department receives, and last year they got talking about, actually, if we don't get the truck that we asked for in the grant, then we're going to look to purchasing one too. So we found one that would actually fit inside Station Two. Station Two has got a small course in the back of it, and as far as the truck that we would like to have in it, it would just be a little bit too big for the station, we wouldn't be able to get it in. But as far as the truck that we found, and we did put a committee on it, the committee consisted of five, six people, and they went out and found this with it saying, "Wetherford, Texas, it's a new truck, it's not considered a new truck because it's a demo, and this demo truck has got three thousand plus miles on it." Well, anyway, the cost of this demo truck is worth, with the box, is going to cost seventy-seven thousand dollars, and we're asking that the commission, commissioners would sign for us because we aren't going to take a loan down at United Community Bank to pay this off, and these payments will be instead of payments of fifteen thousand dollars a year for five years, and we've already laid back fifteen thousand for last year and fifteen thousand for this year, so we'll actually be paying thirty thousand dollars down for the truck.
That leaves over forty-seven thousand.
And then we'll probably still get the loan for a five-year period. So hopefully, and our endeavors will be to pay for it soon as we can, as the funds come in.
The words of the county just co-sign on this note.
Co-sign on the note, and would agree to tag it and insure.
Now, wait just a minute, you're telling me, you're going to tag it and insure it?
Well, yeah.
Tell me.
It will be a county truck.
You said you're going to get a, you said you're going to get a five-year loan.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to hit the fifty thousand for seventy-eight thousand right now from the bank?
Well, you know, and I had to talk to the treasurer about that, we've got, and he said that he, with the funds that we've got now, we could go ahead and write a check for thirty thousand dollars that would cover the first two payments. I don't know what the interest charge or anything like that's going to be taxed on to this, but I'm hoping we go ahead and pay thirty thousand down and then just finance the forty-seven thousand additional dollars left.
For five years or three?
Four or five, but you know, if three's better, we go.
So if thirty thousand dollars you count like a reserve, so you know that your first two years, that's going to cover the payment for exactly. So if you finance for five years, you're going to put thirty thousand dollars, you're going to pay your first, that's going to be your first two years payment, which y'all have. It's not like you're going to be putting thirty thousand down.
No, not at any point.
It come out in five years.
You're just going to hold that in your account.
Yeah. Whatever would be more beneficial, I know we don't need to go over it, we voted on the fifteen thousand a year, so...
In the county, we would just have to insure it today?
Yeah, but if that...
Because at the end of the day, it will be, it will belong to the county, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you're paying for a truck, volunteers are paying for a truck that's going to belong to the county.
Yeah, well, we've done one like that here several years ago, and we had, and we've actually got it converted in there and like that, but it was Rescue One.
Are we going to be able to get it here from Texas County, I mean, what, sign the other code?
Could we ask at this time, does the county actually maybe cover the bill?
How much is the bill?
Sixteen to deliver here on our dock, from Wetherford, Texas. But I think that would still be cheaper than buying two airline tickets and putting somebody up in a motel and then, you know, actually sending two people out. We've sent big white trucks before and I asked them to do that.
They never did show up.
They just took a lot of them on in California.
That truck ended up costing us about seventy grand, and it was a few five thousand dollars. There was a few hospitals, but that was before my time.
Definitely before this.
Definitely before.
You don't have any ambulance runs in Texas?
No, we didn't have one up to...
I mean, I think it's a win-win for the county, I mean, I appreciate all the volunteers and everybody that takes and raises money to do stuff like this, but the whole county can be benefited from the money that the volunteers are raising. I mean, even though, you know, the county, we standing good for the note.
Tell people what, sorry, what this thing's going to be equipped with.
Actually, this truck will be equipped with the jobs of life, the extrication tools that it takes to get people out of cars that you just can't just open the door up and get them out. It's got an array of equipment, you know, from airbags, and these airbags, lifting farm equipment off of people, you know, just whatever it takes, but it will be a frontline rescue truck, it will be a truck that will be certified through GMA, so...
What, to get certified through GMA, that's, is that going to cost you another money to get this picture truck?
No, sir. In fact, it will increase our inventory to have another truck certified by the state.
Okay, I agree with Mr. Johnson, I think we'll make a motion to, staying good for the volunteers. You make that motion, Mr.?
I'll make it.
Your turn.
I'll say.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Life can keep coming, I said, I'm not going to flip.
You should have my...
Better say it. You want that money, man.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the list, public commentary.
Yes, I have a matter, I'd like to stand up right here for...
My name is Roger Henry, out of Fifty-Five Anderson Way, outside of Blue Ridge on Oscar Road, and I've got a matter I'd like to bring before the commissioners, it's a problem, a situation I've been trying to get resolved on my own since June involving a person who owns land next to me, but I can't get it done, I said.
Don't tell the board what the problem is.
No, I'll tell you all you want to know about it. We don't necessarily have to go through all this stuff, but I did bring some background information for you. My neighbor, not neighbor, the person who owns the land next to me is, he had built over onto my property, it's seventeen feet, and there's quite a bit of construction that is not only within the fifteen-foot setback, but up against the, up against the property line. And I would, I would like to have the county exercise and enforce that fifteen-foot setback because the reason is, he's, he's building a fairly large rental cabin there, and I want to put a fence up and, you know, I, my property is my retirement home, and it's something that I want to protect against, against renters for the weekend.
So you want to do that with a fence?
Well, I hope to.
You hope to.
I have what attorneys have, I have attractive nuisances on my property, as they're called, and I don't, I don't want to run afoul of that.
Okay, well, as I told you earlier, the bank foreclosed on it, and I guess you bought part of the, he owned both, no, it's a start with, I understand.
Uh, I named Ned Dogner.
And they sold it to you, and then that, you've got a deck out on your property?
Yes, sir.
And that time, you're getting water off his property, so it's kind of a mess.
No, there's no water involved, I have a well on my property.
You got a well on, okay.
Yes, sir, that's not the issue. Maybe you're thinking about something else, but I put a copy of the plan in there, I met with Keith Nicholson about this issue, and he told me if I would firmly establish the property line, that he would have, he would have that building removed from the fifteen-foot setback, and last time I met...
Is it a building or a walkway?
It's, it's a deck and a walkway.
Oh, okay, that's a different one.
Well, it's not a gravel walkway, as you can see.
The question is, if you own this building, when you own both parts of the property?
He didn't own either part of the property. A guy named Ned Dogner owned both pieces, and he went into foreclosure, and I bought it from two gentlemen from Atlanta who bought it from the bank, and this guy is, his name, this guy, his name is Larry Minor, Lawrence J. Minor, he bought, he bought his piece of property on a, on line auction, I don't think he ever had the intention of living on it, but I think he got a really, really good deal on it. But this is, this is, this is the piece I'm talking about.
You're talking about the deck and that ramp, or I mean that?
Walkway and a deck. And you can see the, the walkway was seventeen feet over on the micro, I have since removed that myself, and what I'm after now is...
In other words, from this picture here, this is gone.
Yes, sir, that's gone.
Yes, sir. So you want fifteen more feet, huh?
I want, yes, sir, I want the, I would very much like and appreciate it if commissioners would enforce that fifteen-foot setback there and have that removed.
So what was the structure of the building? And can you show me on this plan where it's at?
Yeah.
If you would, it was right here where it's saying pigs.
No, that's my property, right, that, that, this, yeah, yeah, this is it right here.
So, can you show me where your corner is here?
My corner?
Yeah.
Here and here? This is my house, this is the deck, there's the tax on my house, there's a walkway, all this on this side is...
So this is him?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So this deck is right up to the property line, again, would you really consider going to variance and approve it or not?
Keith said there wasn't even a permit from the building, and so I would assume not. He had a retired gentleman living in that property, and, and the guy did a bunch of building around there, I was traveling, frankly, I didn't, it's not my practice to keep my eye that closely on my neighbor, but when it came to my attention, I approached, I approached him about it, and he didn't seem willing to, you know, try to work with that angle with the little guy. And I did, I approached a couple of attorneys about it, and the retainers, they asked me for it, I knew I couldn't afford that.
So it looks at the weathering of this material on this deck, but that's been there a while.
I'm, I don't have any expertise in that area, so I, it wasn't there when I bought, when I bought my, my piece of property.
So when, when was that, let's nail the date.
Well, okay, I didn't come prepared to do that, I didn't bring the deed or anything, I bought my property about five years ago, and he bought his sometime after that.
So you bought yours, he bought his, and in the meantime, he's built this structure?
Yes, sir.
Over the property?
He built part, the part of the walkway and the hand railing over on my side of the property, but, and about, I don't know, less than a foot of the deck was over after I got it marked.
Okay, let me give a key tomorrow, we'll start seeing what we can do.
Do you need me to come over or anything?
Let me go over this with him first.
There's another situation there that may not be under the purview of the commission here, but it's a concern I have, and maybe you can direct me where to take it. When he, when he, he built, when he bought that property, I know because I looked at it myself, there's only a three hundred and fifty gallon septic tank there, and he's building a cabin that's big enough to rent to four, up to fourteen people, and that's going to take about twenty minutes to destroy that septic tank, you know? So I'm concerned about the river, I'm concerned about, I live there, he doesn't, you know, I'm concerned about what might happen. Is this the right form to bring this to, or?
You need to bring it to the health department.
The development people and the health department don't talk to each other?
Well, yeah, they talk to each other, but that's where you'd have to go to get a permit or a variance on a septic system.
Well, that's not what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to bring it to the, an inadequate system to the attention of, should I go over there tomorrow and see them?
I would.
I would. Because we wouldn't know if he applied and added to that system, we, I mean, we would know that, the health department.
The health department would. He's already built over, anyway, I, I'm not, I really don't have a whole lot of, I'm not trying to get the guy, I just want the, as you said, Mr. Simon, I don't want one inch of his property, but I want every bit of mine.
Okay.
Now, his, his...
Let me give a key tomorrow, if you want.
This is his contact information, I put one of my cards to deal with mine, if I'm not doing anything. All right?
Sound good, Ms. Kim?
Thank you.
Thank you. Or anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to update you about the litter essay petition that we had this past year, which was very successful, whoops, this is mostly middle school papers. I, we got less than a dozen from the high school, but this is what the middle school did, and I got to tell you, these kids get it. They are conserving the habitats of the animals, and one person wrote, "Our county is dying because of litter." So I wanted to just bring it to your attention that the next generation's behind, and I, some of you may have children, grandchildren, they're concerned, and they're watching all of us about how we're treating Fannin County. So I want to, first of all, thank the donors who were noted, Rain Owen, Anonymous, Mike Burson, Dr. David Rocky, Helen Mesher Trudz, Fannin County Democratic Party, Fannin County Chamber of Commerce, Bobby Dunn Bloodworth, and E C W with St. Luke's Episcopal in New York, as well as the cooperation and kind attention that Karen Walton, the school board gave in helping us pull this out. The three winners, Amy Young of the Fannin High School won five hundred dollars. That's a lot of money, a young person, but she is very motivated, and the two middle school students, Taylor Cobb and Kirsten Schuler, each won two hundred of them, one hundred respectfully. So this is meaningful. We didn't get anything from the elementary, we're thinking that next year we may do like a poster contest in order to get responses from the elementary. But it's really important, and so I want to move forward with continuing this effort with asking the commissioners to come up with, and I handed this out once before, so I'm only going to give you one copy this time, but that we become a member of the Keep America Beautiful, and that becoming a member of this organization, we will get trained, we will get organized, we will be able to apply for grants that will help us with programs that we would like to see happen. So you don't have to answer me tonight, but I will keep coming back, as you know I will, to ask that you approve this so that we can start getting this organized. The choices, I think I mentioned before, would be doing it on profit, that's not feasible, it's not sustainable, it's really better if this stays inside Fannin County and that the commissioners be a part of this rather than even the Chamber of Commerce. As much as they support us, they really don't want more to do, and I think that the best interest of Fannin County would be to have this as part of this, so... And my parting words is the, what one student wrote, she wrote, "We only get one earth." Thank you.
How many essays did you say total, Ms. Ross?
Three hundred and fifty in total, three hundred and thirty-five from the middle school. And we're going to do it again next year, and kids are noticing, they really are, they paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm appealing to each and every resident of Fannin County, call each and every one of you to demand that you protect the citizens and pets of this county. Don't bother having control of the sheriff, they can't change ordinances. Express whatever outrage, dismay, anger, or sadness that you have that these commissioners have not protected all of the residents of this county. I present a petition to you for you to change one phrase in the animal control ordinance to protect all of us from those who would and will make use of the weakness in this law, to dismiss, harass, insult, and damage all the residents of this county. I beg for this originally for the benefit of our neighbors and pets, my better half and the neighborhood pets. Jo had had a critical surgery several months ago and wasn't able to rest to recover properly. Her doctor referred to it as profound exhaustion. Well, she's recently been diagnosed with cancer, and now she's really got to rest. She's going through chemo last week, she's going through radiation for the next... She's going through chemo last week, she's going through radiation for the next six or seven weeks, and chemo again. And she doesn't even need to quiet her rest, which is not happening. She's been harassed and called a whore multiple times in public forum and across the back field. We've been threatened online multiple times, and yet now I'm being sued. I'm asking this council to please do your job. The lack of action on this one change local ordinance is uncaring and unconscionable toward the residents of this county. Won't you please help? Just enforce the existing laws to protect all of the county. And by the way, that phrase that says "a generally recognized residential area" or specified subdivision, what is a generally recognized residential area? Does it take, what, eighteen homes and a half mile area radius? I think we qualify for that, but I can't get the animal control or the sheriff to drive out and take their complaints. I really need your help. She needs your help now.
Thank you, Mr. Mallard. Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Mallard?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for a chance to speak. I was noticing, uh, these, uh, expenditures that the county's taking, the, uh, bid for the courthouse, the, uh, uh, new bones, all in all. Uh, if I'm wrong about this, somebody tell me. I'm under the opinion that Fannin County Animal Control Building was built before the courthouse was built.
You're probably right.
Before the courthouse was built, before the rec facility was built. And what I, what I'm saying is, I'm not saying that these items here don't need renovation, but we got an older building over there that needs renovation too. Uh, I suggested to animal control officers that the adoptions on sadities, that if you could take the roof of the building where they drive in the trucks and then the other end goes out back to the concrete, you could disassemble that, so you, you'd have the ends already replaced. This is a patchwork suggested that I give them. You'd have the two ends, you'd have the forest lab, you'd have to continue out the metal sightings in the roof. And that would give much needed more space for the animal control facility for the least amount of money. I assume the septic tank would, would handle that on without being any problem. And what I'm trying to, what I'm looking for, and Miss Eaton's here, if I'm wrong, I would appreciate if she'd help me too, is looking like it's getting to a point that the facility, even with her taking the amount of dogs she does out of there, is not adequate anymore. We're seeing in the paper, not in the paper, uh, on the Fannin County Animal Control's website, that they're continually over what they depend on. And I would like to just bring it to all the attention. It may be somewhere in line there we could get something where these dog, dogs for a minimal amount of price would have a place to stay. Uh, hopefully we're, ho- hoping that the Humane Society, once they get their facility open, we don't have no idea how big any kennels it's gonna be. Hopefully they're gonna be pulling out animal control, which at this point is a minimal amount if they do. I don't, I don't wanna speak for them, so I'm not gonna get into that. But it's a minimal amount, and if they, their facility can handle ten more dogs, that makes a lot of difference. I do know from conversations, uh, with the officers, at least the way I interpret it, a lot of times they take to pick up dogs because they're already pulling, what are you gonna do with the dogs that's in there if you go out to pull another? We're very proud that they're not euthanized. An area like this that euthanizes dogs, that's something to be very proud of. And we'd like to see things continue along, that they don't have to euthanize, but can accommodate what they need for, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mallard. Anyone else? Anyone else? Hope the commentary is full. Okay, next is Commissioner's commentary, uh, Mr. Johnson, you're the author?
No.
Way down the line.
Can we change that, by the way? Because we need to kinda get that out while we're on the county's views, and you're here today for, I'm gonna speak right. This is the third time I've asked that in Bay Harbor Park, and it keeps getting put right back in the way of what?
Let me sit there.
I don't understand why you keep putting that. I can't comment until I hear everybody's going on in the county from the proper interior, though. So can I be last?
Or, go ahead, just, uh, we look like if we need to paint.
Well, you can go ahead, though.
Hmm?
You can go ahead, though.
Okay. Well, we've, uh, let's say, Fannin County, we're doing well. I mean, we have folks that say, well, this mountain is, and that happened, and that, and, but we are doing rather well. Uh, as far as that go repair bill, we still paved some roads. And, uh, there's, people in Fannin County, they ain't no better people around than them. These two young ladies are right here, what they're doing is great. The thing is, we just, some way that we need to entice people not to throw trash on the road, for instance. And the sheriff needs, see, the truck on our road is not covered up, he needs to pull them over, give a ticket. Or if they pollinate out there, dump, so to speak, uncovered. That's part of, uh, now we've just about finished paving a road for the year. We are looking forward to next year. We did have a meeting a while back, uh, with DOT and State Senator Luch. And the guy called me the other day and said it, uh, they're gonna give us two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars more on our, uh, Lamig, our local maintenance. And that is kinda the fuel tax thing that, uh, it's been running around around four hundred and forty thousand dollars, plus or minus a couple thousand. But this year they're gonna put two hundred more thousand with it. But what I had to do there is, is they wanna specify the roads that we are gonna resurface. That's what Lamig meant, as far as resurfacing, it's not first time paving, that's splash money. And I had to give them two roads that, uh, that they're gonna spend this money on. So one of them is Madova Road, and one is Skeena Gap. Although we're going right up around six hundred thousand dollars to resurface. And, uh, that's kinda the road that I gave him that we're gonna redo. So, uh, that, uh, will be next, going next year. Still got a little bit of paving, patch paving here and there to do, there's some roads that's terrible, the tree, the rain, the trees falling, I mean, we spent thirty-two, forty-two hours last week on getting trees out of the road. Uh, they just, I guess it's raining, it's softing ground up so much. We do have some overhanging road that we do need to, just go ahead and cut down on. Anyway, that's kinda what we got going. We are working, uh, just about completed our cleanup of the fire, firehouse site that we're on, Windy Ridge, and getting ready to start the grade work there. We're gonna try to move a little money around and see if we can do that without borrowing any money. We have a firehouse up on, what, fourteen, we got a roof leak on it. We're gonna have firehouse thirteen, we need to frame up the angle of it. Out in Skeena Gap, we got a, not Skeena, but the Gap Skeena. We got one there that's not big enough, that they need to add some room to, so. It's every day, it's an ongoing thing, and, uh, so far we've kept our head above water, and we are gonna work some of these things. Anyway, basically, that's, that's kinda what I got.
I'd like to, uh, thank the two ladies right here for, uh, what they shed a lot of light on, what you, you've been accomplishing to the schools. I've got grandchildren in school, and I'm proud that they're probably sitting here looking, oh, you know, some of this stuff. And, uh, the litter is very bad in Fannin County. We get it from three others, or two other states actually, too, along with Fannin County, and all the people that's in this area. And I think what y'all are doing is real admirable, affecting a lot of people. Mr. Simon says we've, uh, we're gonna try and build a fire station without borrowing any money. That's something that a county that's near a fire can't say. We don't have it done yet, but we're in the process of trying to find ways to do it, because safety is one of our most remiss, uh, first objectives in this county. It's like the truck that, uh, Larry's trying to get into county gear, I, that's no brainer. I mean, that's a win-win situation, anything to protect the people, and if anybody is bound to, I was waiting in the county to follow gear, or any time of year, actually. But, uh, I think county is really running very well right now. We've, uh, I've talked to several people in, in Gilbert County, and, uh, it's, it's unreal. Some of them don't even, they don't know where the, actually, the next checks wanna get there. They are getting paid, but they, they're in awe of wondering if it is. But, uh, we've, uh, this is one of the commissioners that tried to do is, uh, reach out to each and everybody that they possibly could, do what little, some people think we don't do anything. You know, we, Mr. Johnson and I are part timers, but we're, we're pretty much on, know what's going on right now. We stay, we stay in, in touch. Mr. Simon keeps us informed if not, uh, discouraged at all. And we try to play a active part in all of it, and hope to continue to till y'all be tired of us. But, uh, I would appreciate y'all being, and each and every one of you to come up here with, uh, what, uh, your commentary was, and, uh, we will be here again in two weeks, we tried to make better next two weeks if we did, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, I'd also like to thank the two of you for the hard work you're doing on, on the litter. Uh, as I've said once before, I'm in favor of giving a detail, so that's basically all they do is pick up litter around this county. We're in all the roadside, they're on creek banks, in our parks, it, I mean, it goes, the more litter we can keep up, the less litter, uh, we'll have. When something looks trash, it doesn't hurt someone's feelings, it's bad to throw something out there, it's just human nature. Uh, the last time I commented on litter, my, my yard, I don't think I came up, so I'm kinda reluctant. Same sort of things. But, uh...
I'll pick up a little at my house, too.
Well, yeah, and that's the thing, there's others pick it up, some people leave it late for someone else to pick up. And that's what we've gotta change, is the thought process, you know? It was something that looks beautiful, though, it's hard for someone to litter it up. You're still gonna have those who do it, uh, but it's, it's a lot less likely. Uh, so, once again, for about a third time, I would like for us to look into a detail. They, they could pick up litter, I mean, year round, I think forty thousand dollars a year for fifty, last I checked. Forty to fifty thousand a year for eight or nine men. We can't pay eight or nine men to work for the county. I mean, one person would eat up that much with benefits in their pay. So I would love for us to look into that, not only will we do that, they could help weeding, do some maintenance in our parks and our bridge approaches, they could help in so many different ways. So that's how I would like to, to give you an insight on how I feel. That would be what I would look forward to doing, to help control some of the litter in the county. And I wanna thank you for your efforts, and three hundred something essays, I mean, that means that next year that'll probably be even bigger. And that, and that's what we have to do, is get more people involved. Moving on. Mr. Mallard, do you care if I ask you one question? What is the one sentence you were wanting changed in our ordinance?
Part of the ordinance, sir, where it's, uh, describing what is protected. It says "a generally recognized residential area." What is that, what is the definition? Or "a specified subdivision," which I understand means something like nature's courtyard or something that somebody's developed. There are, and this is a gift on my part, being perfectly honest with you, but I know I'm in the ballpark, more than eighteen houses and a half mile radius around my site. There, I mean, there are more than that. But the Sheriff Department Animal Control tell me they can't do it unless it is a generally recognized residential area. Well, that area is considered rural, or agricultural, or whatever it is, but there's houses everywhere.
And you're wanting to enforce, because your, your accusation then goes that we're not helping protect the people of Fannin County, and I take that accusation very seriously.
I appreciate that.
So what I'm asking you is, what is it you're wanting us to do about what problem you're having?
I want you to empower the sheriff's department, at least to be able to take complaints. They won't even accept a complaint from me for noise from the dogs.
Alright, thank you.
Because I'm not in that res, generally accepted residential area.
Alright. Thank you.
The best they tell me is, well, we can ride by there, knock on the door, but we can't make them do anything. And they won't do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I ta, I, I, when I made that statement, I apologize, when I made that statement, I take it as seriously as you are. I don't mean to belittle you personally, but as a whole, I do feel the commission needs to do something.
So for me to share my feelings on, on the other side of that is, would be to, you know, with that same problem, I have animals in my home too that make a lot of noise. My neighbor's cow sometimes makes more noise than I'm standing. And I, uh, it's my turn to, I'll let you talk, and then interrupt you, so please, I'm just telling you how I feel, so you and I both know. And, and when you, we gotta enforce now, but how do we enforce a cow breeding? Or a donkey breeding? And I think that's part of the problem, and just for you to know how I feel, that, that's a harder thing to enforce when animals are gonna be animals. I have dogs that bark at night too, they protect my goats, okay, they're, they're sheepdogs. So, can I, alright, I'm gonna move on then, and we're gonna leave exactly at that, Mr. Mallard. But, but it's hard for Fannin County to enforce something for one and not enforce it for the other. And I don't want someone knocking on my door every time my dog is barking or something that's pings. So that's how, I'm just letting you know how I feel about the situation, I don't wanna get into the thing, so. It's hard to enforce something when, uh, you gotta be willing to enforce to each and every one of us to have animals. And, uh, sometimes my animals can be rattled, especially the gills.
Two different from thirty-four dogs.
Along from that, so, so, so y'all decided to ask it, or ask her Skeena Gap?
That's, that's the one that worked, no, wait, didn't? I need to let you know.
So, so Skeena Gap and Madova? So it's Skeena Gap and Madova?
I, I gotta, I gotta tell you.
Well, we'll have to do something, ask her, it's gonna probably make a face, it's already making faces. So we need to do that. We, we always talk, we've talked about roads a year, still haven't talked about... We, we always talk, we've talked about roads for years, still haven't talked about, I'm gonna start talking about it tonight.
It's million dollars.
Ask a road is in a, in a shame.
Ask a road, you certainly see it.
So, 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 so we need to, we need to start right now. But Ask a Road is part of, my professional opinion, is the worst road in the county as far as falling apart. Another winner or two, and we're gonna have to spend big dollars. Madola's bad. When I was just on Ask a the other day, we were doing a job. I almost didn't ask it. Ask, we need to make plans to do something. At least next year, with Ask a, because it's more of a main thoroughfare. And when a road like that starts failing, you're talking about serious dollars fixed. Because in many spots right now, I think when we fix Ask a Road this time, we can't just overlay it because some of the spots are so bad, they need to be milled out and replaced, you know. There's a channel, and I think it's getting that time of year. We're talking about next year's budget. By the next, we need to, we need to, we'll, we'll bring our list of roads and prioritize them. That way, everybody in the county will know which roads are gonna get paved next year. And I bet that means less questions will get asked. But as far as my opinion of roads, Ask a Road is, uh, it's... If we don't do something quickly, it's gonna just continue to fall apart. I think that's it. Thank everyone for coming in.
Okay, uh, we need to go into executive session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Most of the most.
Here's what? Uh, personnel and legal issues.
I'll say it.
On paper, say aye.
Okay, make motion.
Got it. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
Most.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah.
On paper, say aye. Do I hear a motion to go back into executive session? Do I hear a second?
Say it.
On paper, say aye. Okay, uh, we're talking, gonna ask the development authority to do interviews on our, uh, development authority person recommend them to the board of commissioners. So, we're gonna ask them to get that hit, so they're going to do that. The county attorney, uh, updated its own advice on some legal matters. At this point in time, that's, I won't comment on that. Okay, the next, item sixteen. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Most, most.
Do I hear a second?
Say it.
On paper, say aye.